Thank you, Provost. We have one apology and that's from Council McFarlane.
Thank you. Declarations of interest and transparency statements. Councilor MacMillan?
Got a few here. I don't think BAE are actually mentioned, but they're specifically, but it's their role in the new school is mentioned. So I just wanted to declare an interest, not declare an interest, just to say that I've had a look at that and I don't think it stops me from taking part. And my son and my grandson both work for BAE. Quarryors is also mentioned as well, some funding issues for Quarryors. My daughter works for Quarryors. And there's also quite a large part of the subject in the paper about leasing. I'm on Thorn Athletics Executive Committee and they lease the Thorn Athletic Academy from the council. So I've done the objective test and I don't think anything stops me from taking part in any debate. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Councilor MacMillan. Do you have any more declarations of interest or transparency statements? But to see if we have any. Hands up. Okay, there's a message in the chat. So we could... Councilor Eilidh Nicholson? Councilor Eilidh Nicholson has a connection with Quarryors and we're noting that also. Councilor Ian Nicholson?
Provost, just in relation to, just in relation to Quarryors, I have a member of the family who works for Quarryors. That's a connection. Thanks very much.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Nicholson. And that appears to be all so far. If anyone remembers anything during the actual meeting, please let me know. Okay, it might be worth pointing out to you just now that the reports we're going to consider today, the accounts have already been through the Audit Risk and Scrutiny Board on Monday and approved. But no doubt, members might have some questions today. I'm certainly anticipating some questions. And item one on the agenda is the ASZ report to those charged with governance, Remfischer Council Group annual accounts 2425. And we have Rebecca here with us from ASZ, who is going to introduce her report. Rebecca?
Thank you. So today we're presenting our annual audit report for the 2425 financial statements. Our work is substantially complete and we are currently at the concluding stages of the audit. Based on our work undertaken, we are proposing to issue an unqualified audit opinion on the 2425 financial statements. As part of the audit, there were six different audit adjustments made to the financial statements, as well as a number of disclosure adjustments. The audit adjustments identified have not materially altered the general fund balance outlined in the draft statement of the accounts, as most of the adjustments relate to unusable reserves. There are also additionally three audit adjustments that have been made since the report was published. These are presentational adjustments only. So one relates to pensions of 1.3 million, where in the comprehensive income expenditure statement, it's moving 1.3 million from the surplus and deficit on provision of services down to other comprehensive income. The second relates to a presentational adjustment of 6 million on the transfer between reserves. And the third is an adjustment on the cash flow statement, just a presentational issue to make sure that reconciles correctly back to the income and expenditure statement. I'll take the report as read, but happy to take any questions on any of the content within the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. We do have some questions. We have some members who have indicated that they want to make a statement or ask a question. We'll start off with Councilor Graham Clark. Councilor Clark, I think you're joining us remotely today.
Yes, I am. Sorry, I've got flu, so.
Rebecca, if you look at the screen, you'll see Councilor Clark somewhere in the middle. It looks like he is.
Right, thank you.
Okay, Councilor Clark.
Thank you, Provost. On the one hand, ASZ's audit of Remfischer Council's 2425 annual accounts presents a generally positive picture of financial management and governance. While on the other hand, the report raises significant concerns about future resourcing that I've been raising for some time, particularly in relation to medium and long term financial sustainability. Given the continuing and uncertain impact of cost pressures and increasing difficulty of generating cost savings at scale, both of which call for strategic transformation, does the Director of Finance and Resources agree with ASZ that the council must now make difficult decisions on spending priorities if it's to remain financially sustainable, page 16, and it must now talk to residents about tough spending decisions that lie ahead, page 70? And the emphasis is on now, not next year, not in a different financial year, but now. And I think the auditors are quite clear on this, so I was interested to hear what Alistair has to say. Thank you.
Okay, so a question for Alistair, not Rebecca. Alistair?
Yes. Okay, thanks, Councilor Clark, for those questions. I think in terms of my previous reports and the discussions that we've had, even as recently as the council meeting in September, I've outlined the financial challenges as have equally been reinforced within ASZ's annual audit report. I have outlined within those reports, successive financial reports to full council, the financial challenges that the council faces, and the requirement for the council to seriously consider its financial position, both now, but also, as you rightly point out, having a really close eye on that medium term financial position. So I would agree with you, Councilor Clark, that the requirement for substantive decisions in terms of the council's financial outlook could be required, but that is, again, largely dependent on some key factors which are, you know, out of the council's control in terms of our revenue grant position. And we will obviously know more about that once the Scottish government's budget is approved. I understand that the date that I had previously indicated to council has been the 15th of January, that has now been confirmed as being the 13th of January for the Scottish government budget to be announced. And I would hope to be in a position shortly after that date to advise members on what that grant outlook is forecast to be. There is confirmation from the Scottish government that they still anticipate that their budget position will be a three year budget. So that should give us a bit more certainty in terms of our grant position over the medium term, which will be, you know, a welcome in terms of that financial outlook and the degree of certainty we can place on that grant forecast position. So hopefully that is a helpful response, Councilor Clark.
Yeah, Councilor Clark, if I could add that, I think that all of the reports and all of the reports that Alistair has brought to us, they have actually been quite frank and honest about the financial situation that we're all facing and the predicament that we are in. And those reports are actually in the public domain. So they are available for anyone to view, should anyone have concerns or questions or just want to know information. It's all there on the council's website for anyone to read. Councilor James McLaren?
Thank you, Provost. And thank you to the ASZ team for the report, which I found comparatively easy to read. I'd like to ask a couple of questions and draw your attention to one of two issues which I consider to be a big risk to the council going forward. At the meeting on Monday of the Audit Risk and Scrutiny Board, on page seven of your report, you talk about Thistle Primary School, formerly known as Dargaville Primary School, and this is also mentioned on page 43. I'm not going to make a big song and dance over it, but I think it's important to note that you admit that there's been confusion over the number of primary schools in Dargaville, in that you thought that Thistle Primary School was the original Dargaville Primary School. An understandable mistake, since our officers were referring to Thistle Primary School as Dargaville too. As you now know, Dargaville Primary School is a separate school and already exists along the road from the new Thistle Primary School currently being built. So on page 43, under capital and revenue costs, can I assume that the cost to the council of having to build a new primary school, now known as Thistle Primary School, is conservatively estimated at 45 million? And Dargaville Primary School was originally built for the council by BA Systems at zero cost to the council. But I would be interested to know what the real cost to the council has been for the necessary improvements to meet demand for the number of children going there, including the 2 million on modular classrooms to provide extra space. And recently, we've had a new car park just open next to it. So as I understand it, the cost should read Thistle Primary School, 45 million, Park Maines High School Extension, 37 million, million, hence the total 82 million that you have in your paper, plus the improvements to Dargaville Primary School, less the small contribution from BA Systems of 18 million. Is that right? Going forward, on page 44, you talk about Park Maines High School and the planned extension. The 400 extension proposed, presented to councillors, was made by the same officers who created the original 342 capacity Dargaville Primary School, which proved to be woefully inadequate. The officers who created these numbers for the council education board are mostly long gone, but in May 2023, the councillors and administration made the decision to still simply expand Park Maines by 400 places. And that decision was made before the most recent census figures were available, and more significantly, the Edge Analytics Report, which indicated that Park Maines' role would increase to 2,169 by 2031-32. Several attempts have been made to have an options appraisal made, but that was argued against by the administration, backed by input from Gerry Lyons, then Director of Education. The argument being that there wasn't time to allow consultation on the options appraisal. This decision process was criticised by the Accounts Commission.
Is there a quick, Councilor, is there a question directly related to this report?
Yes, I've already had, given you two questions.
Well, I'm sorry.
More coming.
Okay.
In a recent report to one of the council boards, it was shown that the cost per pupil for the 800 capacity Thistle Primary was 50,000 pounds for the new 1,380 capacity Paisley Grammar. It is expected to be 50,374 pounds per pupil. But to add an extension to Park Maines will cost 92,500 pounds per pupil for the 400 pupils going there. With the developer contribution of over 18 million towards secondary provision, a removal of considerable annual busing costs, which I think we've got down to 7 million, over 7 million per year at the moment, surely a secondary school in the Bishopton-Dargaville area would be a more fiscally prudent option. There is now a degree of urgency in the, as in November, the planned extension comes before the Planning and Climate Change Board to seek approval for the work to commence there. There are about 265 written objections, I understand. On page 92 of your report, you talk about the need to build up trust and confidence in the community. Many people do not think that a high school should be the size proposed by refusing placement requests and restricting it to 2,000 pupils. There's also the environmental and cost issues of busing two thirds of school roll to and from Park Maines every day. We've heard how the cost of school buses has rocketed, as I said, over 7 million now. But no account has been taken of the cost to residents of having to ferry their children back and forth to the school for after school activities or for whatever other reason. The roads in Bishopton and elsewhere in Remfischer are already coming to a standstill. Council's building a new Paisley Grammar School of the size of 1,380 pupil capacity that would be commensurate to the one required for Bishopton. In your report, you talk about seeking best value. In the decision to extend Park Maines High School, I think Remfischer Council has fallen far short of this. The argument that a new high school in Bishopton would leave Park Maines significantly under capacity doesn't wash, I'm afraid. Governments are demanding councils to release more land for housing building, house building. And there's plenty of land around Erskine, some of which already has planning permission. I'll be interested to hear your reply, but some people feel that you're too close to the council to produce a fair report on the goings on.
Oh goodness. Councilor, can I just ask you to please consider the comments that you make in this chamber? The last comment you made, I don't think is very appropriate. I will ask.
It's only what I've heard, Provost, sorry.
Sorry?
So it's only what I've heard.
Well, if we all said what we heard and brought it to this chamber, well, where would we be? You'll be able to watch it in the recording. So there are various, a couple of things in your statement that I think were really just reiterating things that you'd heard in the statement. And some questions I don't think are appropriate for the representative from ASZ here to answer, particularly the one in relation to placing requests. I'm going to ask Alistair to come in and to try and answer what he can. And if there are any questions in there you think you can't answer today, could you please get back to us?
Yeah, apologies, Councilor McLaren. I think there was a question right at the start around about the confusion around the name. And I think I have explained that position. I don't think there is confusion around the number of schools in Dargaville. I think there was a financial question, but would you mind please repeating it?
The question about Dargaville Primary School, which was built for the council by BA Systems at zero cost to the council, I'd be interested to know what the real cost to the council has been for the improvements to meet the necessary demand, including the 2 million on modular classrooms to provide extra space, plus, and we've also got a new recently additioned car park next to it. But there are other things as well.
I think in terms of those additional costs, they are included within the capital and budget monitoring reports which go to the Education Policy Board. So that's that information.
That's all information that you've already had, James? That's already been in reports before today?
If that is the case, then could I have an update on, even if it's just to myself, I would like to receive that.
I think, yeah, we'll get an update and we'll give it to all of the councillors.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, right. Councilor Jill Graham?
Thank you very much, Provost. It's the same page of the report, but I will keep it nice, short, sweet. I did ask these questions at audit, but I think just for clarity, it's maybe helpful for all the members to hear the questions. Page 43 of the ASZ report and page 51 in the papers, it talks about the new Thistle Primary at Dargaville and Park Maines Extension. And my first question is, there's an estimated 18 million of developer contributions. I just want for clarity, is that for Park Maines? And also, the figure seems to be an estimate for some time now. So at what point will this developer contribution be finalised? And the second question was, the last paragraph refers to the council is going to borrow 37 millions of Park Maines Extension, but use council reserves for the new Thistle Primary School in Dargaville. So for clarity, does this mean the council's spending half of its reserves for the one project? And the project does appear to be on budget. However, if there's an overspend, is there contingency built into it? And would council reserves required to be revisited? Thank you, Provost.
Okay, thanks, Councilor Gill. Alistair?
Yes, the contribution, that 80 million pounds contribution, that is the contribution that we would anticipate based on the current expected spend at Park Maines High School. It relates to Park Maines. Okay. In relation to the other point, the funding for the new Thistle Primary School is, as council has agreed, will be funded from the council's investment capital fund. I would just emphasise to members that, just, I appreciate, just for clarity, you mentioned spending half the council reserves. The council would be spending a significant proportion of its investment capital fund. The council holds a number of other reserve balances, including contingency balances. So just to make that point clear, the council is not spending half its reserves on the school. I just want to make that point very clear. So hopefully that's helpful.
That is, thank you very much.
Councilor Gill.
It says alarm bells, it looks like half the reserves and it's not. Could you, what would happen, Alistair, to Provost, if there was an overspend, would you relook at that capital fund?
As with any capital project, and you know, we have experienced overspends in capital projects, as members are aware. I'm not aware of anything just now that suggests that the existing budget of 45 million pounds will be exceeded. Obviously, it's still very early days in terms of that project. If there was an overspend position, then we would need to assess how that could potentially be funded within the available balances that the council has or potentially other routes. But I would need to assess that if that eventuality emerged.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Gill. Councilor Ben Smith?
Thanks very much, Provost. I've just got a small question and first of all, I'd like to thank ASZ for their work in the report today. On paragraph 1.8 on page six of the pack, it talks about the transfer of parks from the council's control to the common goods funds after advising the council. I'm just wondering what the benefits would be of this move to the council, whether financial or in terms of operations. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Smith. Alistair?
I'm not sure if there are benefits perceived, but effectively we have a legal opinion now that suggests that these assets should be classified as common good assets. So I suppose it's not, it's not particularly a choice for the council in terms of, well, we can choose to classify an asset either as a council owned outright asset or a common good asset in terms of that. So I think there are, it is effectively just the asset classification in terms of where they sit in the council's governance structure. So it's not, it's not a decision that is informed by a kind of cost benefit analysis, if that helps.
Okay, Ben? Yeah. Councilor Ian MacMillan?
Thanks, Provost. Yeah, again, I'd like to thank ASZ for their work in producing this report. I too found it a fairly straightforward read. As somebody who struggled to get their old grade counts many, many years ago, I was quite happy to see I could sort of understand most of it. I think the big thing for me is the auditors have said, there's an increased risk on the council and its ability to deliver services. And I think to me, that's the headline. And as the Provost suggested, had mentioned earlier on, it's not something that comes as a surprise, because virtually, well, I think in every board we get some kind of financial report. And certainly the boards I'm on, we get a lot of financial detail. So that's not really a surprise. But it's certainly, you know, worth noting that it's been highlighted by the auditors. And I think that when we see the figure of 190 million pounds in savings over the last four years, it really brings home what it's been like for councils, not just in Remfischer, but throughout Scotland, how difficult it has been. And we're at that stage now, as we had to be fighting those savings. So we are in a difficult situation. And I will not be getting into the full details. There's no doubt that, you know, people in Remfischer will be paying for the mistakes that have been made over Dargaville for many years to come. There are some positives, of course there are, there are positives in there. And I was quite pleased to see the positive remarks made about roads. Also invoices, which might not be the most exciting subject for the public, but it's important that people and local businesses get their money quick and get the cash flowing through the system. And I'm particularly interested in seeing, and we've spoken about this at the Education Policy Board, about the positive destination for school leavers. I think we can hold our head up high here in Remfischer about the work that we're doing here. I've just got a couple of, well, three questions here. Through the report, it talked about the slowness of key staff to react to some of the questions asked of it by the auditors. So I was wondering how that managed to come about, because certainly in my experience, when we have auditors or any reviewer things, outside bodies, people jump very, very quickly to get this work done. So I was a bit concerned to see that there was a bit of slowness. There was also auditors picked up on sickness absence. There certainly seems to be a slight improvement in that, which is good. I certainly don't like to see people being off sick for any longer than they have to be, because that has a burden on the service, on the council's ability to deliver services. I'm not saying people should be rushed back. If they're genuinely ill, they're genuinely ill. But I just want to be satisfied in my own mind that we're doing everything we can to make sure people are able to get back to work as quickly as possible. And there's also highlighted was a reduction in customer satisfaction. I'm not on the policy board, the finance policy board, where this is mentioned, although I do kind of skip over it and see what's happening with it. But I would just, I would like to know what we're doing in terms of trying to make sure that the people that we serve, the people of Remfischer, are happy with our council and they know when they make a phone call, something is going to happen. And, you know, their complaints are just going to lie in a drawer somewhere in an email or an unread email. So just like to find out how we're trying to improve things for our customers. Thank you.
Thanks, Ian. I don't know if you can answer all of those questions, Alistair, but if you can, will you please? Rebecca?
Thanks, Councilor. So I suppose just to comment on your first question, then I'll pass over to Alistair in terms of the performance metrics. So in terms of the comment around the timeliness of responses from staff, a lot of our audit requests do go through finance and we have been getting timely responses from the finance staff. However, sometimes we do have to go out of the remit of finance into areas such as HR, payroll, other areas of service within the council. And do appreciate that they have, you know, day to day jobs that they are undertaking. So once we go out of the remit of finance, sometimes we do experience a wee bit of delay in terms of responses. But just to give assurance that we did manage to speak to everyone that we required to as part of our audit, and we did get all the responses in a satisfactory manner that we expected. So it was just to give assurance on that level.
Okay, thanks, Rebecca. Alistair?
Okay. Yeah, I suppose just on that first question, yeah, I would agree with what Rebecca was saying there. The audit process covers obviously not just the financials, as you can see from the 54 report here, there are a whole range of other considerations that the external auditors will consider in terms of providing a full picture of the council's position as it can. And I will speak to a range of officers right across the whole council, all of whom are busy individuals. And occasionally that can result in a bit of a delay back to, in terms of responses back to the team. But rest assured, it is something that we will pick up where required with those relevant teams. In terms of your other questions, absence levels, I think are an issue that the council has encountered for a reasonable period of time. And it is obviously in terms of the monitoring of that, there are regular reports to the Finance Resources and Customer Services Policy Board in terms of the, both the levels that have currently been incurred, but also in terms of the efforts that are made and the actions that the council has taken to try and bring down absence levels. Obviously, as you've pointed out, Council MacMillan, there will always be a level of absence that the council encourages. We have a very large workforce. And inevitably, we will have, we will encourage a range of sickness that is unavoidable. It's a natural position. But rest assured, as officers and managers, we make every effort to both monitor and manage absence within the policies that the council has agreed. In terms of customer satisfaction, again, we are a large organisation that delivers services to literally hundreds of thousands of individuals. We are never going to keep everybody happy all of the time. But it is something that obviously we strive to provide as good and efficient and effective a service as we possibly can within the resources that we've got. Again, in terms of reports to the Finance Resources and Customer Services Policy Boards, that is outlined in there in terms of the number of interactions that we have with customers across a whole range of work streams. But obviously, within, I suppose my particular section, which includes some of the front door services, the actual customer services and customer contact centre, there is obviously a range of measures that have been put in place there to try and improve and more effective and efficient the engagement that we have with our customers. And indeed, there's an exercise ongoing at the moment where there is more direct engagement with residents to try and understand exactly what their issues are and reflect those and improvements that we'll hopefully be making in terms of service provision over the coming months and years.
Thanks, Alistair. I think Alan wants to make an additional comment about the customer satisfaction query, Ian?
Thanks, 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 Provost. Just pointing, Councilor MacMillan, to page 60, I think that's where you were referring to, and Alistair was just touching on it. There, just on page 68, it does note that there was some concern with the National Household Survey, the robustness, the data that is used to inform the LGBF satisfaction benchmarks. So you'll note in the section there on that page, just outlining, we have commissioned and indeed completed a detailed a detailed survey across Rainfisher and that will be reported in due course, and the intention of that is to provide a much more robust and holistic assessment of satisfaction levels across a whole range of council services, so hopefully that will as that's reported, will provide additional reassurance and information for members about the sentiment in view across our communities of a range of public services that we provide, but just to point that out in terms of what's detailed in the report.
Pec councillor McMillan, yeah councillor Andy Doig.
Okay, thanks very much Provost. I've got some observations to make, if I could, and then a final question at the end. As a committee of audit risk and scrutiny, I'd like to say Provost, I've got complete confidence in the the officers that helped AZETS to produce this report. I've got every confidence in the impartiality and the fairness and the professionalism of AZETS as an agency, and as you've already said, this report has already been to audit risk and scrutiny on Monday and been passed. There's some observations, obviously the public and elected members will be concerned about page 16, the paragraph that other members have alluded to Provost in relation to a financial position and the fact that the council, quote, "the council must now make difficult decisions on spending priorities if it's to remain financially sustainable", but I think we have to remember Provost that we don't exist in a political vacuum here. We haven't been the author of our own failings here. There's some good aspects in this report, councillor Ian McMillan's picked up in that, there are some real positives in here. There's other decisions that have been taken in other places that could change the situation. Economists have got a great saying, "Setter is Paribus", which means all things remaining the same. This isn't some sort of fiscal tarot card reading, it's a forecast, it's not a certainty. So I think we have to be aware Provost, as councillors, if for example we change the situation regarding local government funding, now I have to say at the last full council, there was a very impassioned plea by councillor Dowling, which I completely agreed with in relation to, we need to really have a radical look at how councils are funded. We're running up to Scottish elections, so I'm going to look with great interest to what every party in this chamber has got to say about local government finance. There's other decisions that have been taken place at Westminster, macroeconomic and geopolitical decisions that affect us. So we have to be, I think, easy on ourselves in the sense that we've got difficulties here, we've got challenges, we aren't the author of these challenges and we have to look to those in power in other places to try and help us out of that, but taking radical and bold decisions, it's not just us that need to make political, difficult decisions Provost. There's people in Holyrood and Westminster need to do the same, to make our lives easier. And the question to Alistair is at the end, do you not agree Alistair, that if different policies were to be pursued in both Holyrood and Westminster, the outcomes for us would be different? Thanks.
Okay, thanks councillor Doig, Alistair. Put you on the spot.
I suppose there are a range of policies that affect the financial implications for local government as a sector and across both UK government and within Scottish government. Obviously I would want to see more money coming towards a local government in terms of the Scottish budget that will be, as I mentioned earlier on, getting decided in January. I think there is a lot that local government can do to support other areas of the public sector and the investment in local government would potentially, you know, help support some of the consequential impacts of underinvestment in local government, but I think at that point I'm essentially straying into political territory that I'm Mr Lloyd.
Yeah, this may be a question for some of the politicians, Andy.
Thank you for your comments, especially about the confidence you have in the officers, I'm sure that they will come up very much, as I do. While it's good for us, well, not just good, but crucial for us to be raising the issue of the financial state of affairs throughout the country, not just for this council, I think it's also crucial that we reassure people, reassure the public, because if you read some of the controversial headlines, you would think the council was going bust next year. I can assure you that is not the case, and I'm just going to bring in Alan to see if he can reassure you further.
Yeah, thanks, thanks very much Provost. Just to add a few comments, obviously it's been raised by a number of elected members and first of all, what I would say is I completely agree with the rating that AZETS have placed in the report in relation to financial sustainability, what would maybe take the opportunity, and Alistair touched on it briefly, the main members is that's not a sudden change for the council. I would probably remind all members for a long number of years, probably for the past 15 years, financial sustainability and financial risk and challenges has remained a major challenge and area of risk for the council and I think has probably been flagged in each of the annual audit reports is a key area of risk and I think councillor McMillan touched on the figure of £190 million of savings that have been delivered by the council over a long period of time, as we've continued to address that medium-term financial challenge, so I think to provide some reassurance to members and to members of the public viewing the report in the papers, it's not a sudden change in our financial position and financial outlook and indeed if you recall, you know, over the past year, the council's reached quite a significant financial milestone post-COVID recovery and post the significant economic turbulence that's occurred since then and linked to not just COVID but geopolitical events across the globe and some of the significant cost pressures, the council is in a financially stable position. Our current year budget is in a balanced position with no reliance on reserves for our day-to-day spending. That's a very, very important place to be. There are many councils across Scotland that are not yet in that position and are facing more acute immediate financial risks, so it's not to underplay, I think, the scale of the medium-term financial challenge. That remains, it remains there, but not yet come through the other side of that tunnel where a medium-term financial challenge at scale remains for the council, but I think the council has demonstrated a strong track record of being able to meet and manage that level of financial risk whilst delivering services across communities and progressing the ambitions that the council has had throughout that period. It does undoubtedly get more difficult to deliver change and transformation to support savings and not impact on services that we deliver to our communities. That position's been felt across the country by all local authorities, but I I think it is important just to recognise that that risk rating from our external auditors, it concurs entirely with what Alistair has been telling the chamber for a number of years when he's been in the position of a Section 95 officer, as did I before that. So the challenge remains and it does remain a challenge for the council and the council needs to continue as it has done up till now to continue to progress transformation and change and take difficult decisions whilst not losing sight of the ambition that we have for Rainfisher, so I think it's just important just to highlight that it does remain one of the most significant risks for us to manage, but it's not a sudden shift in the council's financial risk exposure and right at this moment in time, the council is in a stable position and well-placed, as well-placed as any local authority in Scotland to meet that challenge moving forward, but I think it's important not to diminish the scale of the challenge. It's still there, it's still significant, but I thought it was helpful to provide that context Provost.
No, it's very welcome Alan, thank you so much councillor Andy Steele.
Thank you Provost, I'd like to ask a question on the common good funds, it's on page 43 of the packs and 35 of the hard copies, and it's really just a very quick question. Most of us who represent Johnston, I think, look at the two common good funds quite jealously on a regular basis and I don't understand why Johnston Common Good Fund has got such little, or virtually nothing in fact, by way of assets, and I'd like to understand why that is, thank you.
Hey Alistair.
Yeah, I think, as I said, we've maybe had this conversation. Both the Rainfisher and Paisley Common Good Funds, obviously each of the common good funds have been in place for a long period of time, you know, going back to I think the 17th, 18th centuries, so and how they have built up over that period of time has been a consequence of you know, donations, gifts from previous benefactors to those particular funds. Unfortunately, the Johnston Fund has not benefited in the same way from those historical donations as the Rainfisher and the Paisley Common Good Funds has. And obviously where you have donations and particularly of land over a historic period where some of that can be used to generate further income, then that effectively cumulatively over quite a very long period of time results in a position where you have in particular the Rainfisher Common Good Fund, which is, you know, a a healthy fund balance to to manage, and unfortunately that has just not historically been the case within Johnston. So hopefully that answers your question councillor Sting.
So my suggestion would be if any of you have any well-jonson friends, direct them to the Johnston Common Good Fund, thank you very much, donations would be very welcome. Andy, do you want to say anything else about that? Okay. Councillor Ian Nicholson.
Thanks Provost, just to touch on some of the financial aspects of the paper, but can I quickly pick up councillor McLaren's contribution at the start, this isn't the first time that councillor McLaren or the individuals from Bishopton seem to want Erskine community to pay the price for the mistake in Dargable, not only does he want houses built over Erskine to solve the problem, but not in Bishopton. But I also understand as well, suggestions came from Bishopton that we should shut Erskine primary schools to solve the issue, the park mains, so I think they need to reflect back, yeah, yeah, James, you can go and check it back. I think it needs to reflect back to, it's not good in any when an issue like that happens to start laying the blame or the cost of that on another community as an expedient, I don't appreciate that. I mean, you made the comment that you should build houses in Erskine to solve the problem, apartments. That's not the people of Erskine's problem, James.
James, I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
So on to the paper, I just want to thank AZETS for the report, it's always good for the council and any council to have an external auditing taking place to show up certain areas where we are doing well and certain areas where we can do better. If I can take you to page 53, as was indicated before, this council over a long period of time has been a very good, very stable financial council as one of its key priorities, because if it's not financially stable in the way it works, then we cannot continue to deliver the frontline services that people of Rainfisher want. At the top of the page, it shows you the council's external borrowing has decreased by £2.5 million and our debt ratio is one of the lowest in Scotland's councils, that's a significant factor within the council. Because once you've sort of pushed your debt ratio up, you're nowhere else to go after that. So that's a good indication of a well-managed council in that respect. And if I can take you on, councillor Doig mentioned the fact that we are subjected to external factors, well, that's true. If you go on to, I think it's page 55 down the bottom, it just shows you the cost for the national increase by the Labour Government was £6 million, offset by the SNP group by £4.5 million. But the bottom line is, that's £4.5 million that the Scottish government haven't got to spend on public services in Scotland, because that £6 million just adds to our debt pile and that money has just gone straight down to the treasury. And despite being asked to consider offsetting local government, and I mean the whole of UK, from the national insurance increase, they refused to do it. So whilst we're in the era where we're subjected to cost of living crises, we're subjected to the war in Ukraine, we're subjected to COVID, the resilience that the council has shown has been, I would say fantastic with regards to coping with all that, and that includes the financial impacts and fallout from that. But that's one small indication on a page where national governments can help local government. Whilst we're all sitting here trying to pick through the faults and the errors and what could be done etc, that's a simple, small indication of what can be done by national governments to help local government, not to make all the harsh decisions or make the right decision at the right time and not be forced to make decisions, but in normal times we wouldn't have to do if the finances were there to allow us the time and space to do it. So as I say, I welcome the report and I know the officers do a great job as well in trying to reply to the information required. We need that clarity with our financial position so we as elected members can make the right decisions based upon the information that we have and the resources that we have at that particular time. As I say, so I want to thank AZETS for the report and also want to thank the officers for the engagement in this process because it helps us elected members to explain the situation to our communities about where the council is with regards to its assets and its resources. I just wanted to make that point Provost, thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Doig, because I'm feeling very generous today, I'm going to ask you to, I'm going to allow you back in, but please be very brief.
I will be at such a point of information, in response to councillor Steele when he asked his question, I could see councillor McMillan was smiling, it's a question I'm glad councillor Steele has asked. Just briefly Provost, I'll organise an away day for the Johnston councillors. If we go to the Johnston History Museum in Johnston, which is housed in Morrison's, they have got all the minutes of the former Johnston Town Council, the answer will lie in the bowels of that, so there you are.
I go, getting a wee day out on the back of your question Andy, but you're very happy about that. A cup of tea with councillor Doig, thank you councillor Doig. Okay, thank you for all your questions and I hope you're a bit more reassured about the council's actual position. And I'd just like to say that, you know, everybody plays a part in that and the good place that I consider our council is just now, all staff and all elected members, so thank you so much for everything that you do to support everyone who's trying to deliver services and make a difference. Can we just agree the report then, item one, thank you. And thank you Rebecca for being here to answer questions and introduce your report. Item two is the audited annual accounts 2425, Rainfisher Council Group, can we agree the report? Councillor Ian McMillan.
Just want to flag up a couple of things, it's maybe, I don't know if it was more pertinent to item number one, but it is mentioned in here as well and the relationship with external bodies that we have, and I think it would be remiss not to mention that the IGB and the financial risk we have with that, as members will know, the elected members, sorry, not just elected members, well, the elected members made a decision that everybody kind of knows about the other week, which kind of resulted in a stalemate, if you like, in the IGB, so I think we need to remember that still kind of hanging over us as well, and it might well be something that the council has to well, I'm sure you'll be looking at it through your budget process. And this morning, when I was coming in the car, I heard that the Audit Commission had mentioned I've done some report about culture and leisure, and obviously that's something that's very important to all parties in here, I would suggest in Rainfisher. I haven't had time to read through that report, but I'll be doing that later on, and again, one rein is obviously our arm for culture and leisure, so I'm not entirely sure what they're saying in general or if they're specific about councils as well, so I think that again, that has to be something that has to be flagged up, but again, you know, very, very happy with the report, again, very, very straightforward and very easy to read, thank you.
And just to reassure you about the IGB, I can tell you that discussions are ongoing and obviously more information will come out at a later date. Okay, can we agree that report then, item two? And item three, the AZETS report to those charged with governance, quotes, conservatory, observatory, trust, annual accounts 24 to 25, can we agree the report please? Yeah, and item four, audited financial statements 24 to 25, quotes, observatory, trust, can we agree the report please? Thank you very much for your attendance today, thank you. 55 minutes.